Welcome, everyone, to the April 11 City Council Work Session. Welcome back from break. Hope everybody had a good one. And we're right back at it with our work session on City Hall. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and it's good to be back in session. And we have a lot to do tonight, and so I'll turn it over to Christie and her team to get us started.
Mayor Percy, Council, we're very excited to be back tonight to talk about City Hall. As you know, it's been a while since we've had the opportunity to come back and reconnect with you, and much has happened since that time in the work that the team has been doing. I'm going to take you a little bit down the path in thinking about what we've been using to inform our decision-making and some different spots along the way before I turn it over to Mike and the team to give you more details about the design changes. One of the things that you've heard the team talk about is that this is really the first chapter in what is a 100-year story. We like to think that we're building a 100-year facility for people to enjoy for many years to come. And the phase of this chapter is really at the core of it is the people who are the heart of our community and working to create a facility that reflects the civic presence that everybody can be proud of, that it's welcoming, inviting, and accessible to all, and that people identify with it. The City Hall belongs to the people of this community and must represent the values of the community and the fabric of what makes Eugene a unique and wonderful place to live that we all enjoy. From the beginning, you have provided strong leadership and direction. Our responsibility has been to do due diligence in bringing you back what we've thought out, decisions and choices for your consideration, and tonight we're coming back to provide you with some more options for consideration. I like to think of the project that we've been on as having a bit of a rhythm. You hear us talk a little bit about the loop of decision-making. And in this case, our design team collects input from Council, different groups that we speak with, and takes that input and integrates it into the design and the goal of reflecting the project values. And they take a really broad look at what is possible and weigh that against the challenges and the benefits of each of the options in terms of how they make decisions and bring forward what we believe are the best options for your consideration. You may recall that at the last meeting in July that we presented the schematic, the 100% schematic design for the building. And at that point, we requested your feedback, and we mentioned that we were going to be going out and doing some community outreach. And Mike's going to talk a little bit more about the community outreach that's been done since the last meeting. Just as a reminder, what we heard from you when we presented the schematic design was a deep appreciation for the simplicity of the building and its design, and the transparency, the accessibility, the welcoming, the fact that no matter what point you used as an entrance, you were invited into the building, and it was easy to see and be part of what was going on. You mentioned that you liked the flexible design approach that we were using and that we were forward-thinking about the future of the building and what the community needs may be in the future, and also what types of different decisions might need to be made, but that it was a flexible design. We talked a lot about the use of cedar and the connection to our past in terms of the old building. And you also reminded us to be mindful in thinking about the historical perspective and telling our story as a community, and the team has continued to do that. One of the greatest places of emphasis that you made was on the building. Can you hear me now? Sorry about that. So what the last place of emphasis I was just talking about was the telling the story of who we are as a community. And we take that to heart in every time that we're having a project meeting or design meeting and thinking about how the design and how the building reflects who we are so that everybody feels welcomed. In July, you might remember that we didn't ask you to make any decisions or take any actions, but we basically asked for your input. And so the reason for that is that we were at a place where we had a schematic design, but much needed to be done to bring that design to life. And so over the course of the last few months, we've spent a lot of time, I use the royal "we," it's actually the project team that's done the hard work there, in looking at what the options are moving forward. You may also remember that the City Manager mentioned that this was a continuous cycle process and that there would be more conversation with Council as we go around and we look at what's possible with respect to the means for the cost and the design. And so we'll be talking a little bit more about that this evening as well. One of the things that Mike will talk a lot about and the design team will talk a lot about is iterative process and has in respect to the decision points that we'll be asking you about, which have to do with building design, energy efficiency, seismic level, and council spaces. The team has faced various challenges as they've worked through the options over the last few months, and they've worked diligently to optimize the project objectives to the greatest extent possible. As you know, a 100-year building is indeed a legacy project. It requires thoughtful and deliberate decision-making, and the design team has been responsible for taking, they've taken a great deal of pride and responsibility for taking the long view for this building and making sure that we're thinking about all the possibilities into the future. As we will share today, thoughtful planning takes time, and in any project, time, it costs money. And so some of the information that we'll also share is in the form of sunk costs, while other costs reflect decision points for your consideration and, if you so decide, budget authorization. As I've emphasized a few times already, and I won't belabor the point, we've been really wedded all along the way to the Council goals and priorities that were adopted based on the community input that have been received. And I look at Mike, I think that that process started somewhere in the neighborhood of 16 to 17 years ago, as Mike was reminding me today. And we've captured all of that feedback and used that and integrated it into the values and the goals. And the design team has demonstrated time and time again their commitment to making sure that we don't lose focus of that along the way. And lastly, one of the things I want to mention is I don't get a chance very often to speak to the design team, and they're a humble group, and they're doing, they're the exact right team to be doing this work. They're very committed. They've been diligent and responsible and receptive to all the different things that we've asked them to do. And I've really appreciated the hard work of the team, and I think that you'll find that tonight they've continued to move along past that provide us with options for consideration. Council, thank you for your steadfast leadership and direction all along the way. As I was thinking back along the project, you've made a lot of really tough decisions, and we've really appreciated that, and it's guided our thinking and been very helpful. And tonight, the team is providing a set of information for you to consider and making more decisions as we move forward. And we won't be asking you for any action. There's no City Manager recommendation tonight, but the purpose is really to give you the best information that we have available and to answer all your questions. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mike Pennwell and the rest of the team. Thank you.
Thanks, Christie. Good evening, everybody. Just want to go through these items on the agenda. We'll move fairly quickly, but we want to give you a thorough enough update to give you a good grounding, but leave plenty of time for your discussion and to ask questions and so on. Of course, Christie mentioned the project values that were developed by Council. We're done with a significant amount of public involvement and have guided our efforts throughout the design process. Those values translated into a series of qualitative project goals based on more Council input and public input. Did quite a bit of public input during the early part of this project with a number of groups and incorporated that into these more qualitative goals. And then those, in turn, translated into more specific project objectives. This also, of course, included Council input, and we followed up with some additional public input with some of the groups that we had visited with previously. Green Lane, couple of the Rotary groups, downtown Neighborhood Association and others. The project objectives fall into these three general categories, and the design team will talk more about how these are represented in the building. Christie mentioned the integrated design process with complex buildings these days where we have aggressive energy efficiency goals and the goals and values that we're trying to incorporate into this project. It's an iterative process that requires the entire team to be involved. There's checkpoints along the way that weave these different issues together. The purpose is to propose solutions, test, refine, and then maximize the value as we move forward. This involves all the people that are involved in the various parts of the project team, the design team members, Joel Brokaw and Miller Hull in the lead, plus all their subconsultants, our construction manager, general contractor, McKenzie Commercial, the city project team, all the staff that's involved, the core team, plus all the staff we brought in over time, the commissioning agent and architectural advisor that we hired to advise the city as well. This has led to getting together to solve, get all the disciplines in the room, and the point is to solve multiple problems simultaneously and have a fully integrated project when we're done that represents our values. So with that, I want to turn it over to John Rau and Scott Wolf to update you on the design.
Do you want us to use this mic? It's okay. Thanks, Christie and Mike. We're really excited to be here to show you the evolution of the design and hopefully explain how the values that set us on our course are being realized. And although we've been doing a lot of detailed work and coordinating and integrate what we call integrated design, as Mike describes, it's good to step back and look at the larger context and potential impact of the project. The vision along 8th Avenue of connecting Willamette Street to the Willamette River and how this project, right at the middle of that, is at a crux point. It really speaks to the future identity of the city about participation in government as the building faces the public realm and is welcoming, and really about the future of the city. Eugene at 200, one of your values.
And when you think about buildings like City Halls or other structures that are so vitally important to the community, these aren't just buildings, but they're places within the community. And from the earliest concept, we've thought about this building as being part of a public space that is then connected to a larger thread that connects Willamette to Willamette and becomes a symbolic heart of the city. As we move from concept to reality, though, we have to start looking at how those ideas of transparency, connection, identity begin to translate into real building materials, into curtain walls, into other facades that not only are capable of conveying that idea of transparency, but also begin to address some of the environmental and energy goals that the project has established. So our first study, you've seen this before, back in mid-2015, this, we believe, began to convey that idea of accessibility and transparency, especially at the ground plane. But as we stepped back and evaluated this, some of the other goals, identity and stewardship, we felt weren't quite as strongly embodied in this scheme. So we were challenged by our city staff team and by you to look a little bit more deeply at what would make this truly a 100-year building. Many of you have used the term "legacy project." And this slide just illustrates those key points. A building, a legacy, really helps to create our place. It reveals our character, and it invites our participation. So as the team started looking a little bit further about how we could evolve the scheme into one that really embodied these values and the idea of a legacy project, we brought forward to you in mid-2015 this version, which doesn't show up too well on the screen here, but we can guarantee we will have, be addressing some acoustic and some visual concerns in your future chamber.
Christie did a good job describing some of the things we heard from you last July, you know, things that were appreciated, the simplicity of the building, transparency, the connection at the public level, the use of the cedar in a way that told the story of the previous City Hall and took that forward. But we've heard that we need to continue to work on what it meant to do a building in Eugene that was of this place, and continued interest in energy efficiency and the systems of the building and the performance of the building and sustainability, interesting in the quality of light coming and the safety that the building could provide. So where we are today, and again, the colors are more vibrant, but there they are on the screen, the idea of, in our climate, of sheltering people in the rain in the winter months and then extending out porches, and you can see an extended roof on the upper level, protecting, shading from the sun, and really speaking to engaging people in the building, engaging the inside and the outside, one of the things we think is most powerful about this scheme. So it really goes back to a diagram that we showed you last July, which is, there's an inside and outside, but they're really thought of as one place, a place for the people at the ground level, accessible, welcoming, warmed by the color of the cedar, and extending out to the public realm to extend that invitation.
And then looking at the building from across 8th, it's one that is proportioned, we believe, in a manner very akin to classical buildings. It's a singular expression. It's comprised of a series of columns, and the spaces between the columns are what we call bays. And again, you can begin to see here the transparency at the lower level and that real solid rhythm across the entire south elevation of the building. The north elevation is equally important. We've talked before about the north-south axis through, that is part of the public entrance to the building, both from the south plaza, but also importantly, a second front door, if you will, from the north. People arriving by vehicle will likely be parking in the north lot. This provides not a backdoor entry, but we believe a differently expressed front door on the north side of the building. And that idea of the north-south axis really becomes an armature for the art program. We've had a number of meetings with the Public Art Committee, looking at incorporating the Jan Zuck sculptures at the south plaza, the Three Rivers, and at the north, a piece called Unknown. And then also along the axis, right in the main entry to the building, Andrew Vincent mural. And when we begin to look at the energy and the experience at that ground plane in the image on the left, you can begin to see how the sculptures, how the activity in the plaza really begins to relate and connect to the activity in the council chamber. So if we look at a section through the current Phase 1, current City Hall, and the idea of a future Phase 2 building, we've worked fairly closely with the Public Art Committee in positioning that mural so that a portion of the mural would reside in the current Phase 1 project, the other portion would reside in the future Phase 2. So a very poetic way, we believe, of tying the two structures together. We looked at a number of options with the Arts Committee, and this was a unanimous decision by the committee to look at the mural in this section. And a view from the future dais, looking out across the chamber to the portal that will define the space between the chamber and the entry, and the portion of the mural that would be reinstalled on the west wall of the main entry, so that it's still present within the building, very much a connection to the cultural and artistic history and a reminder of incorporating not only historical art pieces, but also commissioning new pieces that would reside along that axis.
And just continuing on other elements and features of the building, Mike described some of our specific objectives. Of course, we've talked before about the EUI of 30 goal, and we're, as we've worked through, and this is a lot of engineering and coordinated work of the design team to meet that goal, and we're on track to do that, and we're really excited about that. And that is part of what we call the path to net zero, and Scott will show the idea of energy generation onsite and you start balancing the loads of the building, the energy that it uses with the energy that you could generate onsite. I think this speaks to, of course, when we talk about reducing energy use and generating energy, we talk about lowering operating costs, and it's important to think about this, not just as a near-term goal, but a long-term benefit and a way of looking at stewardship over the life of the building.
And these initial strategies to get to an EUI of 30 or below are really investments in the long-term operations of the building. So when you look at the total cost of ownership, those initial investments really result in main O&amp;M savings over the life of the project.
We introduced some of the strategies when we saw you last July, related to the ground source, heat pump, very efficient source of energy for heating and cooling, really studying the daylighting to reduce energy use, and we've been working with the Energy Studies in Buildings Lab and are really pleased with the direction there. And then talked about the double skin facade, which allows us to explore that idea of transparency that we saw in the original concept, but actually provides higher performance. South side to the building allows us to provide sun shading, it allows ventilation, and again, retains that visual connection to the whole building and the civic scale. There have been some questions come up about the safety of that glass, and this is laminated glass, it's not going anywhere in the event of an earthquake, it would stay put. It is glass, but it's a double layer, so we're able to manage the heating and cooling, and actually has an environmental benefit to the performance of the building.
And then when you look at the state mandate for green energy technology on new public buildings, which requires 1.5% of the construction cost to go into green technologies, it's a complex formula, but we're addressing that through a combination of daylighting and photovoltaic arrays on the roof. The darker shaded area that you can see there, we believe will provide enough energy to comply with that state requirement. But we've importantly designed that entire roof to accommodate a full rooftop PV array so that as we begin looking at strategies for a path to net zero, as funding becomes available, we can complete that PV array and further offset the energy use of the building with additional PV. And we also know that the seismic standard has, you may have questions about that, we wanted to just briefly introduce that. The building code requires different levels of seismic standards, also has different risk categories for different building types. And if you look at this graph, as you move up, there's obviously increased seismic resilience. The building code really is looking at making sure people get out of the building safely. So when you look at a 1.0, that would be a typical office building standard. That allows for a safe path of egress during an emergency. It does not mean that the building would necessarily be occupiable immediately after the event without significant upgrades, again, depending on the level of damage that that event caused. When we look at City Hall, because it has an assembly occupancy in it, we're looking at a minimum code requirement of 1.25. That is the requirement for this building. And as you know, we've been looking at increased seismic resilience for the building at 1.5, and Mike will talk a little bit more about that.
Yes, this is, this came out of the discussion back in the fall when Risk Staff talked to Council about some of the issues with the post-cascadia after the earthquake. We know that's coming. We felt that the upgrade was consistent with Council input at the time. And whether that's still the case or not, we're anxious to hear about. This is consistent with Risk initiatives in looking at our other buildings and evaluating the safety and plans to upgrade those over time. This is consistent with legislative initiatives in Salem around resiliency in public buildings. There's a move to increase standards for public buildings. But it wasn't just about safety, it was also about preservation of the asset and sustainability. If we're going to spend the money and the time and the effort to build a new City Hall, we'd like it to be around after the earthquake, not only as a place for people to gather. If this is the civic heart, it should be up after the earthquake, we think, but also to preserve the asset and for sustainability purposes. So we're not bulldozing it all, throwing away and building a new building in case the building is too badly damaged to use. And then we also have identified funding source from the Risk Fund that makes sense to use for this, and so that's why we incorporate it into our planning for the building as we move forward.
So we'll finish up by walking through quickly the plans and show you some of the interiors. So the plans, in terms of their organization, are largely the same as what you saw in July. We've been working to integrate the whole, the systems of the building and all the detail requirements. The ground floor is really dedicated to the public and to the Council and to your work. There's good support for that. We've been paying close attention to safety and security and good back-of-house support, restrooms, welcoming entry, good work session in the council chamber. Moving to the second level, to the mezzanine, the vision is to have human rights and neighborhood involvement on this level with eyes on the public level and a good connection, kind of a step up through the building at that second level, providing a welcoming movement through the building. And then as we get to the third floor, where CMO and that work group is located, probably most of the plan development is on this level to really maximize the flexibility of that work group. And you can see on the south edge, on the lower edge, how we have a flexible, open office, a really cohesive work area with good support. It's a secure floor, a welcoming reception, very, very well laid out, we think, on that level. And then moving to the fourth floor, of course, shelled space, flexible space for future offices, really thinking about the future of the building. And when we look at this cut-through and cross-section, of course, what we talked about earlier on the right, the plaza connecting into the double-height spaces of the lobby and the council chamber, and then connecting up the north stair, connecting to the mezzanine, and then the third and fourth floor, you can see the interconnection of the fourth floor and the third floor through that skylight well. And in our lighting studies, we found that's a really effective lighting tool, but also a strong way of integrating the third and fourth floors so it acts as a unified whole.
And just to end with a couple of shots of the interior, and again, we'll, we can certainly get you better-quality images of these that are a little bit brighter, but what this is a view from is the second-floor mezzanine, looking down into the main entry and across into the council chamber. And just the sense of volume, the double-height space that's part of those important public rooms, and the use of wood that was reclaimed from the existing building is something that we've been looking at how to best employ that resource throughout. Looking from the north entry back out towards the south entry doors and the plaza, a very welcoming, inviting space. The mural we mentioned is on the right and the portal into chamber on the left. And then if you'll notice above the doors, the idea of this weaving sunscreen element that helps provide some comfort and protection along that south edge, but also really recalls some of the patterns of the native people that wove baskets and really integrated, or trying to integrate some of that cultural history. There were some comments about, we don't want to just do that through display cases. So we're looking for ways that the building can begin to connect back to that history, but then also look very much to the future. And lastly, the view looking out across the council chambers, a room that we believe is very comfortable. It's a room that has great acoustics and sound quality, and one that has a high degree of transparency and connection from the chamber out to the plaza and vice versa.
I'd like to talk about council offices just a little bit. As the design team mentioned, the first floor is designed to support council activities and be the interface between the council and the community. There's a council suite that is similar in concept to the old City Hall. It's a secure, private suite adjacent to the council chamber with space for meals, some shared workspace, a council restroom, and there's a dedicated meeting room next to the north entry there. So there's not room to expand that suite to individual offices. The mezzanine could fit offices, but that would displace human rights and neighborhood involvement, and we think that that's a really important involvement, and we think that that's a really important connection to the ground floor and to the customers that they serve. The third floor is the CMO floor and is pretty tightly worked together. And the fourth floor is the place that we've always preserved for expansion, of course, and we think that if Council Offices are to be added, this would be the place to do it. It's well-connected to the third floor, well-supported by the third floor, and we'd like to hear your ideas on that as well. So that concludes the design update, and so I'd like to talk about costs, the piece that everybody's been waiting for, I'm sure. This is the area that we've probably worked hardest on in the last nine months in terms of iterative cycles to optimize our values as well as optimizing the costs. So I'd like to walk you through the top two elements represent sort of sunk costs. Those are costs that have already been incurred or that we're responsible for, and it's the site and the building. Those are yet to be bid, and those are the areas where we have flexibility as we move forward. So demolition and site prep, that cost about $2 million total for that process. We had budgeted about $1 million. So that's about $1 million over budget roughly. That was a process where we were really being careful with the dismantling of the building to maximize the recycling and the reuse of the building. Plus, we were in the middle of talking a lot about what it means to properly demolish, and the standards for that have improved quite a bit over recent years, and that represents sort of the best standard on demolition and green demolition with the $2 million figure. The soft costs are the related project costs that go into this, design work, project management, permit fees, all the other things that aren't part of the actual construction. The current budget allocation has about $5 million set aside for that, and that's going to cost us about $6 million. And so again, that's approximately $1 million overage in that part of it. And again, this is an element of time and working through all the issues and trying to maximize the value of the project. So I want to move on to the things that are before us still, the project costs. These have variables that have to do with the time element. The budget for both site and building were set about four years ago in the middle of the recession, and construction cost escalation has increased quite a bit since then. And this particular aspect, the site, includes the north parking lot, the plaza, along with the water feature, and extensive stormwater treatment on the site. The concept and idea for that hasn't changed much, but as we've developed it and tested the numbers and so on, we're at about a half million to a million dollars over the budget, depending on the features that we accept during bidding and how well the bids come in. And the building is the biggest variable. This cost includes seismic upgrade, energy efficiency measures that we've talked about, the photovoltaic array to meet the 1.5% for solar, the enhanced civic presence, the maximized cedar reuse, as well as Council Offices. We believe that we can fit all of those into this figure, and again, for about $3.5 to $4 million over the originally allocated budget. Much of that has to do, as I said, with the time factor, but a lot of it has to do too with just meeting the values of the project as we move forward. So that's higher than we'd like it to be, obviously, at 24 to 25 million. That's $6 to $7 million over the currently allocated budget. And so I wanted to know how that compared to other City Halls around the West. So we commissioned an independent cost analysis, looked at 21 different City Halls and public buildings around the West, and identified these five as comparable projects. The two on the right are a little artificially high because they include structured parking in them, and those numbers are hard to pull out, so those numbers would be low as a straight comparison. The two on the left in Arizona are a little bit artificially low because they were both bid right at the depth of the recession, and they got really aggressive bids, and those would cost quite a bit more these days, we believe, and according to our cost consultant. And the one in the middle is probably the most comparable. And all of these are just building costs. The site costs are removed because they vary widely from project to project, and so these are just building costs. And these are adjusted both for time and for location to be roughly equivalent to our area. And this is how the figures I showed you previously for just the building costs compare with Eugene City Hall, even in the current bidding environment. It's still very much toward the lower end of that cost range. So this is sort of the summary of the process and the values as we move through it. We've tried with each iteration to try to maximize the values, address the Council project values, the Council input, community expectations, and organizational values. We believe that the current plan maximizes the values to the greatest extent possible. We've got stewardship in gray there simply because of the initial cost not being as low as we would like it to be. However, in terms of long-term investment and long-term stewardship, I believe that could be a black circle. That's subjective, and so it's up to the individual. But this represents the collective feeling of the project team in the way that we've addressed this project. So we wanted to let you know that we've also thought about potential funding sources as well. What are some of the things that we could look at as ways to bridge the gap with this? The capital budget allocations could include reallocating existing appropriations and dedicating new dollars. Those allocations could be dedicated over a period of time to repay a bond or loan in order to generate some upfront cash to pay for construction costs. The Risk Fund, as I mentioned, is a one-time source that could be used for the upgraded seismic features. That's not only the structural, but it's also the non-structural elements like bracing, fire sprinklers, electrical, piping. Also includes an upgrade of the generator. If we're going to have this building working, we need to generate adequate amount of electricity to run it and operate it. We've looked at fundraising as a possible one-time source for some of the elements like the water feature and the history element that we've talked about. Public Works Funds that could be used to pay for elements of the project, such as right-of-way and sidewalk costs, street tree plantings and potential site improvements if the plaza were to be considered a park. Parking fees will be charged for the use of the lot on the north side of the site, and some of those fees will be needed to maintain the lot, but the remainder could be used to back a borrowing to pay for the cost of the lot. And of course, from time to time, other one-time sources become available, and if that occurs, these sources could offset one of the items identified on this list. Potentials would include things like marginal beginning working capital, loss of settlements, grants, or tax credits and that sort of thing. So next steps, we are scheduling a follow-up work session for April 20th where we plan to bring specific motions back. If we stay on track, schedule-wise, we're in line for groundbreaking in the fall of 2016, which would allow us to complete the project by the end of 2017. And with that, I'd like to turn it back over to you, Mayor Pearson.
Thank you very much. The way I'm going to go about this is I'm going to just do one round where people can just make comments or ask questions, and then we'll just follow up with additional questions. And I'm going to start with you, Greg.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Mike, I'm going back to a question that I asked last year, and I didn't see it as part of this presentation. Is there a plan for DBE participation in the project? I don't see where it's happening in the consulting process, and, you know, where is that factor into the development and construction of the building? And then I've got a couple of other questions.
Sure. Real quickly, yeah, we've been cognizant of that with the separate cost comp study. I used a woman-owned business for that, just a small aside, but in terms of the actual construction project, Mackenzie Commercial is very adept at advertising and generating interest within the bidding climate, and they will do everything in their power to promote this project. They work with a lot of folks in the community to try to generate as much competitive bidding, as much participation by variety of companies as possible. And so we're trying to make it a level playing field for everybody and an open door for everybody to participate.
I'm going to defer to Betty because I've got a couple of things I want to write out before I come back.
Okay. Put you in another round.
Yeah, give me another round.
Yeah. Betty?
Thank you. First, I think the time it's taking is amazing, and apparently, the more time we take, the more the cost goes up. When people made bids during the recession, do they have to stick to those afterwards?
Yes, but those projects are already built that were bid during the recession.
No, I mean bids on our project.
The project hasn't been bid yet.
Okay. So, well, okay. Could the Risk Fund be used for anything besides the seismic upgrade?
We haven't explored other uses of Risk Fund dollars, but given the emergency preparedness and the need to take care of our facilities and our resources, that was identified by the Risk Services Director as an appropriate use of those funds, but we haven't talked about any other use for those funds.
And can we find out just how much it would cost to do that extra seismic upgrade?
The cost estimate for that is roughly, correct if I'm wrong, but roughly $1 million.
Okay. I don't think that's necessary, but Council Offices, I think we definitely should have offices, and I do not think they should be on a different floor from the mayor and the city manager. It seems to be that's all connected. And I don't know what you mean by, if the fourth floor is unfinished, and you're going to put offices up there. I don't understand that. You can explain that later if you want to. And the trees, I think by the time the trees grew to that height, you'd be ready to tear another building down probably. Are you planning, is the plan to get mature trees? Or, I noticed there are trees in the pictures.
Yes, the one tree at the far end is one that we would get, a more mature tree. It won't be that big. You can't plant trees that are that big typically and have them survive. But, yeah, they'll be small, you know, when we start out, typical one-inch caliber.
So in 30 years or so, they'll be?
It does take a while. The trees along the street are a disease-resistant species of elm that are fairly fast-growing and have a nice columnar shape. Those should grow to appreciable height quite a bit sooner than that.
Okay, thank you.
But, yeah, it'll take, you know, like with any trees, it'll take 40, 50, 60 years to fully grow off canopy.
One more question. Are you planning to cut the, when you talk about the mural, are you talking about what was behind us in the Council Chamber?
Uh huh.
And you're talking about cutting that in half and putting?
It's in five panels now, and so we're looking at putting two or three of the panels in Phase 1 and preserving the rest for future phase.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to want somebody from the project team with the structural part of this to explain something to me, and for the benefit of folks that are watching and will be listening and all that. It seems odd to me that you could build something to an essential earthquake standard that's entirely coated in glass. That seems just odd in its nature to me. So I heard you talk about the coating, but how is it that that has so much structural integrity?
So there's the primary structure of the building, the foundations, the columns, the beams, the lateral bracing that keeps the whole building intact. And then, as Mike described, there are many other systems that get braced to a higher standard, all the pipes, the mechanical, all that. The standard applies to the skin of the building. Every component of the building has to meet what the code says for that higher standard. So it's, glass is not the primary structure of the building. It needs to stay put, cannot fall off the building in this case. And the engineer has described to us what they mean by after Cascadia event earthquake, that the building be operational where other buildings may not be, is that there may be cracks here and there, there may be things that you need to repair, but you can re-enter the building safely and use it. The glass component, any skylight element in a building meets a standard of having lamination, and sometimes it's strengthened, it's tempered, so that if it breaks, it's still there. So it's important to understand there may be pieces that need to be repaired. The key is that you can occupy the building quickly and use it, which is the point of we understand of doing this upgrade. The building is there, there might be other buildings in the city that are damaged and are not usable. This one would be usable.
I think one of the best references for you and others watching at home would be the OPB special on the Cascadia earthquake. There was a piece on the Japanese airport that was designed, so it not only survived an earthquake but a following tsunami, and they had it cleaned up and were running flights then four weeks later, and that was a complete glass curtain wall, and so it's just part of the technology.
Excellent, thank you. My understanding of earthquakes too is that sometimes in an earthquake, a taller building can actually be safer than a two, three, four-story building because of the whip effect of the structure. Can you speak to it structurally as a four-story building? I mean, would we be safer if it were taller?
I'll try it. You're right. I mean, certain buildings are going to have a certain amount of drift. Taller buildings generally in an event will have a bigger drift to them, is what you're referring to, I believe. So when we identify a risk category, we, being the team, and especially the structural engineer identifies, is given a parameter for a specific building, we're looking at the risk category, we're looking at the importance factor, and with that comes specific formulas and values that you have to use as design criteria. So given that we have a four-story building, those criteria are applied to the building that we have, and that building is being designed in accordance with the criteria that the code identifies.
Thank you guys very much. Michael, can you tell me which value are we serving by the higher earthquake standard that we didn't have as the original part of the discussion? Which value and which piece, in other words, why spend the extra million bucks? What do we get for that?
That's a great question, and it's, as I mentioned, it's not just the increased safety. I think it cuts across all the values. I mean, that's part of this integrated design process. These are kind of woven together. It's difficult to pull any one element out and assign it to a specific value, and I think that that's part of the exercise here, is to solve multiple problems simultaneously. And so it's not only a safety issue, but it's also an asset preservation and sustainability issue because we're preserving the material and not having to, you know, spend the resources and energy to build a whole nother building if this one is damaged beyond repair at the life-safety level.
And I think there is the stewardship and the preservation of the building. Operationally, it really is a question of how do we, as a city, choose to respond following any sort of major event, and whether or not the City Hall has an expectation that we and others can operate out of that building or choose some other place to operate out of. And so, for example, within the city operations, we do have operation centers that we would set up, the police and fire, and different departments will have their department operations center. There's an emergency operations center that we would also operate as a city organization. Part of it is, is how do we choose, though, particularly for this body and any other elements, whether it's the public or the media and those kinds of things? Is there some expectation that we'll operate out of the City Hall or not? And I think that's the, how we would choose to operate, and I think becomes the question on, do we upgrade it or not?
Do you think that after a nine earthquake, the city expects that we'll be continuing to work in City Hall? to work in City Hall?
You know, I think partly will depend on what happens with other buildings around the city. So for example, right now, if you have a 9.0 earthquake, I don't know how much of the public works facility is still standing, and so there will be a need for them to operate out of some facility, for example. It's the same way with, you know, we have lots of, I don't know what the library was designed to, but there's, we have lots of employees in the library, for example, that actually become pretty critical during an emergency operation. And if that building isn't available, the question is, where did they come to actually operate out of? And so there's, I think that's part of what we would also want to consider. If all our city facilities are up to a certain standard, the requirement for the City Hall may be less, but they aren't all at that particular place.
We've talked on several occasions, and I can't remember ever getting a direct answer, and I'd really love to have it someday, not that anybody obfuscated, but I just never followed up with anybody to find out. I'd like to see somewhere that's probably a federal bit of information, what happens to our dams in a nine earthquake? And what's the consequence to the folks in Eugene? We make the joke all the time that there's a 14-foot wall of water coming, right? So let's, I think we should talk about that as it relates to this project as well. The only piece of art that I hope we would lose forever was that mural. I have many friends and neighbors who feel exactly the same way. I don't know how in the world you possibly could got a unanimous decision on that unless everybody was of similar temperament, I suppose is the way I might describe that. I would believe there are other people with different points of view. I certainly am one of them. A note too, that one of the reasons we didn't choose another location for City Hall was because the price tag was $25 million. And now we're there. I'm going to have a couple more questions in the second round, please, Mayor.
Chris?
Yeah, I think there's been some great questions asked, and some, interesting information for me is that to go from the 1.25 to the 1.5 to create the seismic standard that you're talking about is an additional $1 million. So the seismic piece is a million. You know, there's a lot of other costs, but the seismic piece is a million. Okay, that's good to know. That's reasonable. And I think prudence is one of those values. It's an accountable use of public money to not build a building with the intention that it would fall down when an earthquake comes. I don't think we would want to do that. I just attended a conference last week, the Central Oregon Economic Development District, and they happened to do a presentation on economic recovery after the Cascadia earthquake. And a quote that they made that I thought was really interesting, because it didn't have to do with emergency operations, it was just about the economic and infrastructure recovery, was that fallen buildings don't aid resilience or recovery. And if they all fall down, then you don't have a place from which to do the recovery effort. And it talked about how the months, and in some cases even years, in order to recover. And you're right, we would have emergency operations centers, the Sheldon, Second Chambers, that's where emergency operations, but emergency operations are just that, emergency operations, not the long-term recovery and resilience, and you need facilities to do that, and you don't want to build a building with the expectation that it would fall down. So to me, that's a million dollars well spent. So with that piece said, I come back to, you can have it fast, you can have it right, or you can have it cheap, pick any two. And the dilemma we're confronting now is, we want it right, and we want it fast, and we want it cheap, and we can't have all three. It simply doesn't work, and we're demonstrating that right now. Every project I've ever been involved with, whether it was a school, a swimming pool, an administration building, the longer you wait, the more expensive it gets. And so that clock is running. Construction timelines do go up, and we're very conscious of the fact that the longer we wait, the more expensive the building will get. I think, for me, the biggest shift in my thinking is, way, way back when, we were talking about a $17.5 million building. And in a way, you're still talking about a 14-, 15-, 16-, $17 million building, but there's additional costs that keep getting added on. Construction costs, soft costs, site prep costs, other things like that which run the price up. So really, we're talking about a $25 million project. And I guess what I'm getting at is, it would be good at the outset of the project to not create an unrealistic expectation that we can get fast, right, and cheap all at the same time. Because then we have this wake-up call later on that creates this disappointment that we probably should have been realistic about at the beginning.
George?
Thank you. Chris brought up a point about the additional costs and going through the list of cost increases. You know, some of those, I guess we have to blame ourselves for, like the added expense on the demolition, because we wanted to be thoughtful and careful and reuse a lot of the materials. That drove up the cost of demolition.
Fourth floor.
Yeah. The artwork in the soft costs that you listed, there's a certain percentage of built-in costs for artwork anytime a public building is constructed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that based on the overall size of the project, the cost of the project? How do they determine that?
1% of the construction cost.
I'm sorry, what?
The construction cost.
Okay. And that's one of those unfunded mandates, something that the city has to pick up that bill, but it is required.
But it's our, it's our code, the city code that requires that.
Okay. All right. And then the risk fund for the seismic upgrade, where does that money actually come from that goes into the risk fund?
I want to make sure I understand. So you're saying that where is the money collected? So we collect money for risk from different departments in terms of, you know, the expenses that we anticipate. We also have reserve balances when we have good experience, and so we would be using unallocated or undedicated or nothing that's been programmed for anything else, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
And so we would be using one-time resource out of that fund for that purpose only.
Okay. So to kind of follow the money trail, it's money from the general fund given to each individual department, and then?
It could be from multiple funds. I could get you better information on that when we come back next week, so you have a really clear path through the money trail.
I'd like to see that.
What I can add is, thinking of it kind of like an insurance fund, in that you have a number of clients of that insurance fund, which are all the funds, general fund, some are not general fund, you know, actually, most of our budget's not general fund. And so all those funds pay an insurance premium, so to speak, based on experience and claims and anticipated expenses, and then the risk fund then manages those funds.
You know, in the overall scheme of things, a million-dollar increase may not sound like a lot, but that is a lot of money. Right now, I'm kind of torn between whether or not I'm in favor of spending that extra money for the top-of-the-line seismic upgrade, but then again, I can see the value of doing that in the long term. So I'm still kind of undecided on that. And then on the council office space, you know, for, I've been on the council now, this is my 14th year, I think, and the most we've ever had was a conference room, a small conference room. We currently have cubicles. I don't use it. Personally, I don't like to use it. I work out of my home if somebody that wants to meet with me. The people that elected me live north of the river. If they want to meet with me, I'm going to find somewhere locally where we can meet. So I like the proposal as it is now. It looked like on the schematic that it was a cubicle-type thing for the council space with a dedicated conference room, so if you do have to meet in private, you've got that available. So as far as individual offices for the councillors, I don't see the need for it, as long as you have your own individual workspace if you choose to use it, and then a conference room that is available if that's necessary for one-on-one meetings.
Claire, are you there?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here.
You have comments?
I've got some questions and comments, and I can't see a timer, so just stop me if I go over.
Okay.
So first of all, I'll say there's definitely not unanimity on the mural. It's not my favorite aspect of the old City Hall, and I would not have voted to have it included in the new one, but that's fine. But, so I really do think that the design is starting to shape up into the legacy building that we're looking for in terms of the look. I really appreciate all the work that's been going in there. Again, I think the two entrances is a very elegant design aspect that makes it even more welcoming than it would have been if, you know, a second entrance had just been for practical reasons and not built into the design the way it has been. A question I have about one of the design images, it looked like there was an arch kind of separating where the council would sit from where the public would sit in the council chambers, and I'm wondering how that arch might affect sightlines for folks, both the public and the council.
That's an architectural element dividing the lobby from the council chamber. It's not within the council chamber itself.
Gotcha. Okay, I couldn't tell that from the image. Yeah, and it was very hard to read the slides with any text and/or financial information on them on the webcast. So can you verify that the difference between building the seismic from 1.25 to 1.5 is the difference, a million dollars extra?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, so I, you know, I kind of agree with what Counselor Pryor said. You know, I'm still open to deliberating on this question, but part of me thinks, why invest in this important building and then plan for it to be unusable in the event of a major earthquake? That does not seem like shepherding the public's dollars in a thoughtful way if we really intend this building to be a 100-year building. You know, my gut tells me that the public will need a gathering place in the event of such a major catastrophe, and we don't necessarily want them trying to go to where our Operations Command Center is. You know, there may be need for temporary shelter for folks. So I was going to ask as part of a follow-up to this work session, if staff might do some research on how other cities position their City Hall in the event of a major disaster, or how they were using their City Hall in the aftermath of major disasters. You know, the only ones I can think of right now are, you know, Hurricane Sandy, Hurricane Katrina. But, you know, I wonder what's the best practice? Do people expect to have the City Hall as a place for people to go in the event of that kind of catastrophe? On the council offices, I've kind of, oh, I'll take a second round when it's my turn.
George?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I have to say I'm extremely disappointed in the way this work session's gone. We didn't receive any information in our packet. This is what we got in our packet on Thursday. There's no pretty pictures, there's no talk about values, there's no, the worst of all is there's no financial information. And I find that just incredible, that the city council would be presented with this before we go to a meeting to discuss a $17 million project. Well, now it's a $24 million project, a $7 million cost overrun. That's a 50% cost overrun. And then the financial information that is presented is up there. Of course, we don't even have a copy here waiting for us when we get here. It's one page. Things are compressed in broad categories, and there's no line-by-line to compare, well, this was the original, these are the costs. This just doesn't fly. This is a really extremely poor presentation. So now we have to ask for this information. We don't even have a copy of the one page, the one page out of the whole thing that actually showed the money. And listen, you know, we've spent an inordinate amount of time talking about the values of stuff. I think we've got that down, you know, and all the slogans and buzzwords, connections to the river, the great streets, blah, blah, blah. And the thing is just ballooned out, you know, out of control here. We've got a train wreck running down the tracks. We don't know. That's how much it is now. What's it going to be another month or two? What's it going to be when we actually start construction? You know, so that's got to be corrected. We need to get all those figures. I mean, I've got a whole list of questions I want to ask before our next meeting, but you did not provide us with good information for today's meeting, guys. I'm sorry, you just did not. Again, a minute left. I'm going to move on to the city office, the council office space. Who made the decision not to provide us with offices? This is supposed to be a legacy building, right? A 100-year building? In the future, and probably not too distant future, in a few years, Eugene will go from a strong city manager, weak mayor and weak council system, to a city administrator, but strong mayor and strong council. The councillors need office space. We need real offices. Just because some councillors don't use them, we're talking 100-year building, the councillors will use them in the future. They need a nice place to meet the constituents. And so, you know, the cubicle thing's just not going to work anymore. It works now, it's fine now. But when did we discuss this? When did we discuss this? We never discussed it.
I think from our perspective, we thought we had had numbers of discussions through the years with various council members, both in this setting and as we've met with various council members around offices. And our impression was, and it may not be the correct impression from the majority of the council, and that's partly what we're here for, but our impression was that the council requirements were space in which to be able to work, have a private space in which to meet with constituents, which is provided, and that there was access to those spaces and some security and some of those kinds of things. So when we took that, we asked the design team to provide that, and that's what they have provided. So they've done what I have asked them to do. So part of what I think has arisen is that for at least some council members, the expectation is, is that there are full offices. And so we understand that, and what we're proposing is, yes, if the council majority says yes, let's have full offices, our recommendation would be is to start providing those, building out the fourth floor, because, one, that provides the space, it provides access to the third floor, and operationally, we think that could work well, and the offices could be designed very nicely. It wouldn't take the entire fourth floor, but they could be designed well for the council space. And so that's how that process went.
Well, I'm out of time, but I'll need another round. Thank you.
Alan?
Good presentation. Thanks for the update. It was too long and coming, though, but I understand this is the start of the conversation about what we found out, and there's no decisions tonight, so I'm okay with that. I'm going to click through some things. Seismic upgrade, the reason we should spend a million dollars on this, because it's a darn good business decision. It's a very good business decision. The likelihood of a devastating earthquake in this building's lifetime is pretty darn good, and we are basically self-insured, correct? And so the decision put to us, the choice, is to, if we have that building, is to basically build a new building and maybe spend 25 to 30 to 40 million dollars at the time instead of spending a million dollars now. That, to me, is a pretty good choice. It comes from the risk fund, it's available. How much is in the risk fund right now?
I don't know that number off the top of my head.
It's millions, though.
It is, it's millions.
Because it's covering all of our insurance needs. So it won't impact anything we're doing, and it's a fund just sitting there waiting to be used for this particular purpose. So I don't want to look, have, if that eventuality happened and we didn't spend this dollars and we have to build a new one, I don't want to have people look back and say, what were they thinking? To me, a million dollars seems pretty cheap, and having grown up in California, this is a no-brainer. This is, for the resiliency aspects, but also, I think we should have an operable City Hall after an earthquake, from functionality, resiliency for other departments and for meetings, but also the psychological aspects. A place for the public to meet, get information, and to gather is very important. The energy efficiency side, EUI of 30 as opposed to a baseline of 75 is a smart thing to do, another good business decision. It's paying down for the future. It's 60% better, or 60% more energy efficient. It will help us down the road when 20, 30, 40 years from now, operating costs are going to be what we're talking about, not what the capital costs were 20 years ago. This will lower our operating costs, so that energy efficiency is money well spent. I like the use of the cedar and the better civic presence of the building. I think you guys... I think you guys did a good job on, on enhancing all of that. Council office space, I don't need an office. We're not full-time councilors, and so a cubicle space is okay with me, I don't need it to be on the third floor, and, but the only thing I would need is a cubicle space and a, and a meeting space, conference room for a meeting with constituents and other folks. Uh, on the art, very subjective stuff, the mural wasn't my favorite part of the art in the city hall. What I do like about it, though, is the, the continuity that it creates and, and that it hearkens back to the old city hall. And there's, beside the cedar, that's another very iconic piece of the, of the city hall, whether you liked it or not, it's, it's part of it. And it isn't gonna be that bad or big, so, although the council will still look at it this time instead of the public. So there's only nine people looking at it instead of 100, so that's better. So all in all, I, I think the increases are for stuff that we asked for or should be doing, so, um, I like kinda where we're going, but I do wanna talk about some of these more and get some more details.
Before we do round two, couple comments. One is that if you've been following the news, you will see that the schools that are being built have their costs going up as well because cost, things just cost more now. So it is in keeping with what we've seen in, happening in other places. My concern is that as we look at this new city hall, that we think about some of the other pieces of art that we have, I heard what you talked about, but we have art all over the place, and I think Isaac has kind of gone through and seen what we have. I think we should use this as an opportunity to be able to take better care of and show art that we, good, good pieces of art that we have, and I hope we'll work on that. I did want you to say publicly what we know about the, the ground that we're building the city hall on in terms of people's comments about whether it's safe to build on, so I wanna hear you, um, tell the public about that.
Sure, yeah, we, uh, the site is, uh, it's a really excellent construction site. Now that we've excavated, we've, uh, put in engineered fill, uh, the work was done under the observation of a geotechnical engineer. Very good load capacity, very good soil quality, down to 25, 30 feet below the surface, and good engineered fill on the top. It's well-draining, clean, stable, conventional foundations, it's, uh, it's, I, I would consider it one of the better building sites in all of the Southern Willamette Valley, so it's, uh, it's in really, really good shape and ready to go.
There you have it, folks. Okay. Um, the other, um, a couple other things is I wanna remind people about how many glass, tall, tall glass buildings there are in San Francisco, just saying. And then another comment that I would make is that I think as policymakers, sometimes we hear about you said this and now you're doing this, and people bring up the trust factor, but to me, people should expect policymakers and staff to learn from facts as they occur as we move through things, and expect that they will use their good brains to alter their decisions as they get new information. That's what they should expect, to say, just sticking with something when you know it's not the right way to be, it's not current, doesn't make any sense. So I wanna honor that we have to learn as we go along, keep the same values, but we really have to do what we know is best for the community and deal with current conditions. And I would say in terms of, one of the reasons we have an art committee of people with some expertise is that we don't all get to have our personal little fluff on what, what's good art and what's not good art, that we have people that we put in place to do that, to help us, uh, understand the merits of the art that we have and to try to take good care of it for future generations. So round two, I have Greg, Mike, George Polling, Claire, George Brown, Chris, and Betty, did you want another? And you want?
I'm just going round again.
I'm gonna...
We all want two rounds.
Well, I didn't, Betty's the only one I haven't heard from. Did you want another round?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll just work our way around again.
Okay. So, um, so my first question is this, 'cause I had to write these out and formulate them a little bit. Can we go back to the last slide, the one with, uh, the table on it? No, that, no, where was, where were we at with the numbers?
Cost one?
That one, okay. So, my question is, is this, so for the seismic upgrade, we've got, we've identified the, the risk fund as being a source for, you know, monies to, to cover that upgrade. So what about the rest of it? Where, what are the budget sources that would cover the rest of the increased cost? Has, have we had, have, has staff had that discussion? Where would that come from specifically?
There's a whole list.
The whole, okay, 'cause I had to go back up to, wait a minute, switch glasses. I gotta do long, it's long vision and short vision, okay. So, um, we're, we've got, we've got some funding that is more solid than other funding up there. Um, it'd be helpful if we had the actual printout to look at this, but, um, so, you know, fundraising, um, you've got the risk fund for one-time pieces there. Uh, what do we mean by reallocation of existing sources on the public works side?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that last part?
The reallocation of existing sources, public works funds?
I think I'd be best off letting Kirk Corr, the Public Works Director, speak to that. The other thing I would say is, is that we will be prepared to come back with more information about funding options if that's something that you ask the city manager to bring back when we come back next week.
I think it would be helpful to have specific numbers that are attached to those sources so that, or at least close enough to ballpark figures so that we can understand and the public can understand, you know, what identified sources we would be pulling monies from for there. The second thing is, and refresh my memory, what, what, what offices were originally scheduled to go into the fourth floor once we got there, to, to that build out?
We had not made a decision about that. We'd looked at a bunch of different options, but we hadn't made a decision because we planned to make it shelter space and make a decision in the future.
And, um, be more specific with Council Brown's comment, we're looking at, yeah, about a 40% increase in cost. Um, I think that, um, we're gonna have some issues around, you know, communicating this to the public in terms of, yeah, we know that everything increases in cost and that kind of thing, but we were more focused on that 17.25 million dollar figure. And so I think that we're gonna have to look at, um, more reasonable options in terms of what the public can stand. And, you know, I probably will need a third round. I've got about three other questions.
Betty?
Um, I think this, I heard, I have heard from experts that because of the solid foundation, which Mike, Mike Pennwell mentioned, that, that a building would not be likely to get much damage in an earthquake.
Well, it's only partially a function of the site. One of the things about a good, solid, uh, ground is that it transfers the lateral forces quite nicely from an earthquake to, to the, to the building, so, uh, it's, if we did, well, I, I did wanna point out that there are higher levels of seismic bracing we could have gone to, base isolation, for example, to guarantee no damage to the building, and that would have been quite a bit more expensive, so.
And then the only other thing I wanted to say right now is, if there was a huge earthquake, I don't think people would be going down to city hall. I think they would be trying to stay alive or pick up what they could at their homes, or they wouldn't may, probably even be able to get any place away from home.
That's not true.
If they're still alive.
Yeah, I think the, I think that's probably immediately after the earthquake, that's true. There comes a time then, a recovery period, and the recovery period is, I think, the, the place on where do people want to gather? And where do they need to get information? Where do they need to, how does this body continue to function over a period of weeks and months and beyond, depending on how much damage is to the city hall? And so, absolutely, immediately after the earthquake, people aren't gonna rush down to city hall. It's really about how does the city choose to operate for the longer term during a recovery period?
I don't think the city government would be nearly as important right then as the fire department. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I oddly took a class at the University of Oregon last year called Art and Human Values, where we learned how to define what is good art and what isn't, and why. So I, I must say, I, I really don't wanna have our art for our city hall chosen by experts for us. That for me would be a very, very bad way to decide something that's supposed to be welcoming to everyone. That's the critical piece for me. There, I, I don't, I actually could say that I, I wouldn't mind that particular piece of artwork as it relates to a larger piece that I thought more the council spoke about earlier, which is the historical part. I didn't see anything in there that was, and, and I know that, that's predominantly decoration, and there's probably going to be more of that, but I didn't hear any talk about how we're incorporating the history of our community into that space. All I saw was the, the murals. I mean, I, I would hope we would cover the walls with the different things that have occurred in our community and the milestones and the, the history of our community in all dimensions that we can, because I believe that tells stories that allow it to be welcoming to a lot more people than one kind of art that some people like or an expert says is a good. Those stories are us, those stories are our, who our community is. That's, in my, from my point of view, the best way for us to, to be authentic about who our community is, is all of the people's stories, and I mean all, who, who form a part of the, of the fabric of the history of our community. That's why I think it's really critically important, so I hope we can emphasize that a little bit more strongly. Um, and I have to say, I thought Alan's argument was a good one, it made me think about that differently. That, as a business decision, yeah. The likelihood that during that building's life, an earthquake hits is what we are told, extremely high. So, yeah, I would think it was gonna be, you know, seven, eight million bucks to make it, you know, a higher standard, but for a million bucks, if we already got in the risk pool, okay, I'm, I'm, I'm not decided or, I'm not persuaded entirely yet, but that makes some sense to me. Mr. Manager, I wanna ask about process from here. Do you have a budget authority to spend this dollar amount now and just do it?
No. No, what happens, what we'd anticipate is coming back for at least another work session, that you vote on certain elements of the project, and then what we will do is, whatever those votes are, incorporate them into final design, uh, which goes out for bid, and when that bid comes back is what we know, the actual cost, and then the council will have to appropriate dollars. There isn't enough dollars appropriated, and so it would be at that time that you would, we'd come back with, uh, an actual budget appropriation for you to consider at that time based on actual bids.
I thought a part of the rationale for this particular location was the fact that we had the money in hand to do this particular piece.
Uh, yes, yes. Part of the challenge, and I think several have mentioned it, we're further down the road than we had anticipated bidding out the project, and so there is an additional cost for that.
Right.
During that time, bids have really changed over the last couple years as far as the recession and, uh, what the bidding climate is. That has changed significantly over the last couple years, so that has a, a significant impact as well, so.
And I agree, and I think the mayor's right when she said different circumstances and different times require different decisions, that's fine. But I must say, one of the key reasons in the process of deciding when and where and how was that we had the money. This change changes more than just the features of the building for me. It changes, are we going in the right direction with this if the costs continue to rise? Thank you.
Chris?
We can point back to discipline.
Thank you. So in thinking, segueing off of that, in terms of the path forward, I think it's important for us to consider that there are decisions that need to be made, um, there's options that need to be considered, and then there's recommendations that we want to hear. And I've not gotten a sense that you or the staff has made any decisions. You're exploring options and you're bringing those to us, and I still wanna hear some of your recommendations for which of those options you think would be prudent or not. But it would be helpful for our next meeting to remind us of the actual decisions that we have made as a council and voted on, to go with a half block, to go with a phase one, to add a fourth floor. There's been a number of decisions that we've actually voted and made. There are yet decisions to be voted and made. It would be nice to kind of lay out what those decision points are, what they need to be. But then I think we also need to have laid out for us, which is kind of what you did today, was what are the options? Seismic options, um, options around sustainability and environmental and, you know, there's a whole series of options that you're presenting to us in, in terms of layout. And then also your recommendations, because there's eight of us here and we're not architects. We have our sense of public policy, which is an important part of the decision, but we're also not the architects or the engineers. So having recommendations helps as well. None of this will be useful without cost information. Not only the cost of these options and recommendations, but the sources of funding for these options and recommendations. Because the decisions we've made so far, some of them, like the adding of the fourth floor and some other things we've done, have committed us to more money. Other decisions that we have not yet, yet made, have not yet committed us to more money, but we may decide we want to, and we need to know where that money's going to come from. Uh, so we need a full cost accounting, a full cost accounting of what these options are gonna cost and what the sources would be to do it, 'cause I, I can't deliberate really thoughtfully unless I know what those are. So remind us of the decisions we've already made, where are we to this point? What are the options and the recommendations that you would make to, to go from here? And then what is that gonna cost us? Both in terms of each item, the cost, but also the potential sources. You've kind of gotten a great start on it today, but going into, in some greater detail. I think we can move fairly quickly if we have that information, and I'm very mindful of the fact that the longer we take in this deliberation, the, the more expensive the project's gonna get. So the faster we can have that information, the faster we can deliberate, the faster we can get these guys working on their final drawings, um, which I think is an important step. So at least for me, that would be very helpful in terms of where, where to go from here, what's next.
Thank you. I appreciate Greg bringing up the questions about the funding sources, and I'm anxious to see some of the, the figures when that comes back. And also, I agree with what Mike was saying about, when we first, when we first started discussing this project, we talked about the, the, the history of our community and the art to display that history. You know, you go to the, the fire station at Second and Chambers, you go to the police headquarters, you go to Springfield Justice Center. Now granted, those are more artifacts than it is art, but it tells the history of those organizations, and that's, that's something that I would like to see in our, in our new city hall. The one good thing about the piece of art on the opposite side is the crowd no longer has to look at it, just us. Years ago, I remember watching a, a meeting on TV, and I don't remember which counselor it was, it was one of the male counselors who's no longer here, had a multicolored shirt on, and on TV it looked like a floating head. So, that is a questionable piece of art. The one thing I'd like to see in our next discussion is a little bit more detailed discussion about the internal security of the building that's going to be in place. Uh, you know, with the changing times that we're facing now, I think it's very important that we have some sort of, of a security system put in, whether it be a combination of automatic or human or key card or bio card or whatever the case may be. But I'd like to see a little bit more discussion about what type of security, not only for our employees and the councilors and the, and everybody else, but for the people that are there conducting business or attending meetings. To me, that's a major concern. I'd just like to see a little more discussion on that next time.
Claire?
Thank you, Mayor. So Council Polling just asked one of the questions I was gonna ask about, um, security and how we're planning for security for the building. And then I just wanted to add that I, on the council offices, I have changed my position And then I just wanted to add that on the council offices, I have changed my position on this probably more than once, in fact. I, right now, don't feel we need individual offices, but we do need space to work, and we do need a conference space that we can meet with constituents with a door that closes. I think that's important. Not all constituents want to, you know, share their feelings on various topics in a cubicle setting. I do not have any issue about which floor our council offices are located on, that does not seem to be a pressing issue, as far as I'm concerned. And then I just wanted to add to the conversation about the cost. You know, I don't think anyone should be shocked that we are looking at a higher cost for this building than what the estimates were, I think, four years ago. There are many reasons for this, some folks have already alluded to those, including the length of time that has passed since we deliberated, and then we took time to revisit our decision again. And then we've been adding criteria and enhancements to the, that will drive up the cost if we decide to implement them. But if we do decide to implement them, the increased cost will be reflected in the high-quality City Hall that we end up constructing. So I think, you know, we need to decide if that's what we want to do, but I don't think that it's any kind of, you know, bad planning on our part that we found ourselves in this position. That's just the nature of trying to do a long-term, important, public project. It's one of the things that tends to happen. So I appreciate the conversation this evening and look forward to the next work session.
George?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, on this, this week's packet, on Thursday's packet, I'd like to see all this information. I believe that we should have had it before the meeting. And also, on the financial page, one page back, I'd like to see all that filled out, line items, rather than just, no, there's subcap, not that one, I'm sorry. Yeah, that one needs a lot more detail. I'd like to see line items there for the range, just within each category. That would be very useful. Let's see, I'm still really thinking that we really need council office space. Our form of city government will change through time, and it may take maybe 10 years, it may be longer, but we're eventually going to have, it's going to be more like Portland's, where we have a strong mayor and a strong, strong counselors who are paid commensurately, and of course, much more will be demanded of us to deserve those salaries. But eventually, we're going to go there as the town keeps growing. I have this feeling it'd be essential to, you know, include that now. The, I don't know if, you know, in response to a constituent's email, an architect who raised the question of brownfield on the site, and the city manager sent us an attachment, "Foundation Engineering Seismic Hazard Study" that they did on that site last April in 2015. And I read that, and within the whole report, there were soil samples and core samples and all that, but the appendix C was a seismic hazard study by Brooke Running. And I read that, it's on page 36, if you want to, you know, access it after the meeting. And she said that, my takeaway from it was that a 1.25 risk factor would be okay on that site, because of the nature of the surrounding area and the nature of the substrate on the site. So I initially had thought that, you know, the highest rating should be built that way. I've kind of changed my mind, we could maybe leave that out. So anyway, you know, a lot of this is pretty technical, and there's just lots of lines of figures and everything, but the seismic hazard study in the appendix is actually accessible to normal humans, and so, it's a decent read. Thank you.
Ellen?
Yeah, I too would like to see a crosswalk of the funding option sources and the amounts and the purposes, think of that. I'd also like to see more details about the particular cost items. With respect to the cost increase, you know, the landscape around here, in Oregon in particular, and in the whole West, is, are, there's a bunch of projects that were planned in the recession that are now cost a lot more. During the recession, there was less work, and people were more hungry, and they're willing to take lower prices and lower profits, and that's just the nature of things when things, the economy picks up, and the cost increases go up, and all those small margins get bigger, and the cost of buildings goes up. On the seismic thing, you know, the New Yorker article and the PBS program, Unprepared, which I just saw a second time, really scared the heck out of me. We are so unprepared for this upcoming earthquake. We're so far behind, say where California is in particular, in being prepared for an earthquake, and $1 million from a business case perspective and a resiliency perspective seems well worth it. I also don't want us to underestimate the value of a standing City Hall after a 9.0 earthquake. I think that will be important. Glad to hear that the site's a good site and ready to go, that alleviated one of the questions I had. I had a question about the history display as well, and I want to see more detail about it. The way that that lobby's laid out, it's all glass, or it's open space, and I'm kind of wondering how that's all going to get integrated into it, because we talked a lot about this needing to throwback. Besides the beautiful mural, how are we going to do that, and what's it going to, what's it going to look like? And I'd like to see more detail on the sustainability and the energy efficiency aspects. I think those are big positives to this project, and I think we need to talk about them a little bit more. And then I thought, George, your question about the, about security aspects is a really important one, and I would like to see some more thinking about that as well.
So thank you all for all of that, your comments. Oh, Greg, you have one more?
One more, yeah. One piece of analysis I'd like us to look at is, you know, when we start looking at taking monies from other parts of the budget, whether it's the capital budget, or whether it's, you know, the general fund, or whether we have one-time funds, what are we not spending that money on? So what would we be deferring if we take monies from certain other discrete funds and apply it to City Hall? Because I think that we need to have kind of a full 360 picture of what that's really going to look like. I agree with Alan and the mayor and some other counselors around the table. I think that the seismic upgrade is well worth it. I think that we, as far as office space is concerned and other issues, I think that that's something that we need to further discuss and look at, you know, maybe some other creative options around that. But what are we not going to spend money on that we have already designated these funds for is an important question that I think that we need to answer and be able to respond to in the public sphere.
They're going to wrap it up. I did want to make one comment, because I was, my comments were kind of lightly given before, but I, we do actually have in place processes about how we make our public arts decisions that are required of our city, and so that, those are in place. Yeah. Thank you all. We'll be back at 7:30.